To start off, we're going to have the invocation by Council Lady Sabrina Wood.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you and praise you for this day. We are so happy and glad to have the opportunity to be in the land of the living today. We thank you, Lord God, for the challenges that are ahead of us. We pray, Lord God, that through those challenges, Lord, that we would embrace those challenges because challenges actually cause us to grow. I pray that we also would have the opportunity to realize the benefits and the positivity things that are going on in our country and in our community. Let us not lose sight of the progress that we have made. I would pray also a special prayer today for the law enforcement community. As they go through challenges and they commit to serve, I pray, Lord God, for your protection upon them. I pray, Heavenly Father, that you will continue to encourage them. And I pray for an outpouring of our community to also support and to also show compassion towards them as they continue to serve and do their job. And as we go through our agenda tonight, we invite you into the process tonight, Lord. We ask for your guidance. We ask for wisdom to make the right decisions regarding the Virginia Beach community. All these I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, all are present?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, do I have a motion for certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you certify the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, could I have a motion to certify the minutes of the special formal session on June 16, 2020?
So moved.
Motion in a second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you approve the minutes submitted.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the informal and formal session of June 16, 2020?
So moved.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the minutes submitted.
Okay, and finally, a motion for the minutes of the special formal session of June 23, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you approve those minutes as well submitted.
Okay, I'm opening a public hearing on the item grant of easement over city-owned property, three point, uh, thou- uh, three point, 3,500 plus or minus square feet of gas pipeline easement by Columbia Gas of Virginia, Inc., Lake Gaston Pipeline adjacent to Watts Mill Road in Greensville County, Virginia.
We have the first speaker who is virtual, Dewan Hobbs.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dewan Hobbs. I'm a major accounts manager for Columbia Gas of Virginia. On behalf of Columbia Gas and the Department of Corrections, we thank you for your consideration, for considering the grant of easement today. Our request is for the purpose of providing service to the Virginia Department of Corrections in Greensville County for the upcoming heating season. We're looking forward to assisting the Department of Corrections with their needs and would appreciate your support today. Thank you for your service and thank you again for this opportunity.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner.
Welcome. Good evening. Oops. Thank you. That one's, that one's on my. Um, on these public hearings, um, I have an issue with easements because there are just so many. It's just never-ending. And a lot of times it's for large utilities. And I'm sure everyone's aware of, uh, of the, the recent ruling against both Dominion and Duke Energy. So I just have, have an issue with all these easements because we should plan ahead and not have to keep taking away, uh, land. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, we're going to move on and I'm going to read, uh, on the speaker's policy. I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call those individuals have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. We have several items with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item that had been, have registered on. The speaker will, will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items that have been signed up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussions and decorum. Whatever views you hold or wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for us to strive for civility and respect. Okay, do we have a speaker on multiple items?
Yes, Ms. Messner. Barbara Messner has signed up to speak on multiple items. The, the first item, Ms. Messner, is one B.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Barnes. And I wish there were other people. I've been here many times. I see people asking, you know, why she speak? Because I actually read most of the agendas and, you know, I pay attention. Okay, you said one?
B.
One B. What about A?
It's, one B is the...
That's going to be heard.
Separately, yes.
Oh, okay. Um, on employee grievances? Yes, I don't have the details on that. So what is the next one? Because it's 293 pages and there wasn't a lot of advance notice. Okay, um, what is the next one?
One C.
One C. Okay, allow operation of motorized scooters in the resort area and on the trolley lanes of Atlantic Avenue. This is an issue that even Mr. Dyer, when he ran in 2000, was opposed to the dedicated trolley lanes. It costs a lot of money. And we have too many issues. Motorized scooters are dangerous. I'm, I'm sure y'all listened to Officer Wickendall because she works at the second precinct. It's very hard to control these skateboards, surries. I took pictures which I sent to Ms. Henley and Mr. Jones. I sent them to y'all. I didn't have time to upload the new ones and print them out. Yeah, with all the problems we have with vandalism, the skateboards are literally allowed to be on the, uh, on the sidewalk. Their sidewalks are, are given to, um, to bars, restaurants, skateboards. The surries already are on the boardwalk. They're already in the street. They're on the bike path. And they're very large, um, passenger vehicles. Some people put eight or 10 people in them and they, you know, it's very dangerous. People have to get out of the way because they're everywhere, including crossing Atlantic Avenue. So I'm opposed to all these vendors and restricted access for locals. We're not even allowed, people are not even allowed to stop on Atlantic Avenue, stop on Atlantic Avenue to drop off, you know, your family members to go to the beach. It's also, Atlantic Avenue is used for all the tour buses. So I oppose this for public safety reasons. Okay.
The next item you signed up to speak, Ms. Messner, is item two.
Item two, okay. Resolution to direct the city purchasing agent to include Virginia Human Rights Act provision in all city contracts requested by Mr. Berlucci. You know, I have an issue with the city appointing, uh, their own members to all these commissions. Everyone's human rights is important, and if we took care of everyone's, there wouldn't be issues with anyone's. You know, I oppose, you know, I oppose any money going, uh, to all these different entities. Okay?
The next item is item I three, ordinance to authorize a gas pipeline easement for Columbia Gas, Virginia, Inc.
Right, and I already spoke on that, so I won't, won't repeat it, but, you know, the, uh, taking away land, uh, for these major companies. It's usually for, you know, uncontrolled growth. Everything keeps expanding. So I just, uh, I think the city and the state needs to live within their means and not keep expanding and taking away land because of flooding issues and, uh, and traffic concerns.
Item four is resolution to establish, establish a community task force, reevaluate transitioning the CBB to a new organizational structure.
Right. Establish another community task force. I wish the residents who are listening and the people who are running, who don't usually show up to these meetings, um, would look at how many liaisons, you know, how many people the city appoints. How can there be any transparency or lack of bias when the city appoints who they want? And most of the time, there's, there's major conflicts. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, um, you know, that's one of the biggest expenses we have. I'm sure y'all see all the new advertising. It's additional $2 million in 2017 for advertising. And then you allocated another $2 million from the COVID for advertising. It's on TV all the time. I've lived here a long time and the hotels used to advertise for themselves and there were return visitors. We didn't have to advertise, especially globally. With the pandemic, why are we bringing people in from other states? You know, why is the, why are the hotels, um, you know, why, why are some restaurants 50% capacity, but the hotels and the timeshare are not 50%? Look at all the, the crowds. And you, you pay $500,000 for, uh, for people to ask people to social distancing? I mean, okay, that, that's enough on that one. Okay?
Item five is the approve a cooperative agreement between the City Council and the School Board regarding legal services for the School Board Administration.
Right, and Mr. Moss, we've discussed this before and you were nice enough to mention that they're separate entities and we should not, uh, have the legal services shared, um, with the city and the school board. And I'm very much opposed to the school, the, the kids don't even have schools to go to. They don't have playgrounds. The playgrounds are closed. But our buses and our bus drivers should not be used for entertainment and shuttle buses. I just don't think that's, um, a basic need. Our kids are having enough problem with education. Our teachers are always asking for, for more money, so, um, yeah, I, I'm opposed to that. And I hope that, you know, you will discuss it like you did before.
The next item is item six, which is city appointee or council appointee compensation.
Right. I did a little research because this is for the acting city manager and I listened for a few minutes. Mr. Leahy has been with the city, I think, for, um, three or four decades, possibly since the seventies, uh, in different positions. And that position should have been filled a long time ago. It shouldn't still be open. And he gets an automatic 10% increase. The city appointees are some of the highest paid, uh, workers and I would hope that they get, um, overtime pay. I know that some of the, some of the people that worked in Building Two, they had a lot of problems with, uh, you know, their work situation and human resources, so, human resources wasn't that helpful to them. So I'm, I'm opposed to the bonuses versus overtime. And I think the city has too much on their plate and too much for the residents. And I also appreciate, you know, reading the information about the city clerks, that they, they're one of the few people that work for the residents as well as, um, for city council. Because most of the, um, most of the appointees work for the city, including the, uh, the city attorney, Mr. Stiles, who give opinions to council on their conflicts. Okay?
Next item is item seven, regarding temporary encroachment at 2300 Windward Shore Drive.
Okay, I didn't have time to look through. I think it was close to 300 pages on this one. It says temporary encroachments. But if you look at, um, you know, for construction and maintenance of existing wharf, boat lift, and bulkhead. So if this is temporary, that's, that's fine. But if it's permanent, um, you know, I'm, I'm in opposition. But like I said, I didn't have time to, to read through the 293 pages. Okay?
Item eight is temporary encroachments into city-owned easement at 4304 Sandy Bay Drive.
Right. Um, you know, the same thing applies. I don't know if it's, you know, I hope you'll discuss whether it's temporary. Basically, the people that live at the beach and have houses on the oceanfront, they have their own access. And a lot of the, uh, beach accesses have been closed. If you, if you look like in Croatan, there's narrow passageway between these humongous cement buildings. It's, it's dark. It's, it's, it's hardly enough room for two people to walk between these buildings to get to the beach. And after dark, it's really dangerous, so, you know, I am for public access, you know, for all taxpaying residents.
Item nine is to appropriate fund balance to the police department regarding equipment and training.
Right. Uh, this brings up seized assets, special revenue, on top of the money that the, that is sent from the state. You know, some of it, like for the, um, body cams, it was 300,000 sent to the city in, I believe, April of 2017. And when the mass shooting occurred, only, I think, 100 officers had, uh, body cams. That was two years later, over two years later. And their body cams didn't even start, um, start until after the shooting had stopped and they entered the building. The Institute for Justice, which I hope people will, uh, will look into, they're one of the few, uh, entities that helps stop imminent domain abuse and a lot of other abuses of government. And they've, they rate the state of Virginia very low for seizing assets, sometimes without someone even being accused of a crime. So, you know, I've for youed some of this information. I don't have all of it because it's very expensive to for you. I have three for youes that are over 300 that are, are waiting. Okay?
At this point, I open a public hearing on planning.
Okay, Ms. Messner, for planning items, J two, which is BQ Ventures LLC regarding short-term rental at 40623rd Street.
Okay, so no one else is here on these items? Okay, um, not one, but two?
Two, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, BQ Ventures LLC, another short-term rental at the oceanfront, 40623rd Street. Uh, BQ, I think, is Beschard, who's financed by Town Bank. And we're, we're losing residential neighborhoods. There should be a limit on how many go into a neighborhood. There aren't enough police to take care of the oceanfront. And that's where there were a lot of wild parties and everything, other places, because they knew where the police were. I mean, all the problems are throughout the city now. It's not just at the oceanfront. So I think we need a moratorium. I believe Ms. Henley has brought this up, Mr. Jones, but there are always, um, you know, it's just two or three votes. Everyone else wants the revenue and a lot of these are, um, investment property. I did hear, you know, I think Mr. Rouse mentioned the difference in Richmond. They have pretty strict rules. I think it's really important when we have a pandemic and we have violent crime like we've never seen in the city before, um, that we need a moratorium on this until we take care of the pandemic and crime.
Item number six, Christopher Masaro for short-term rental at 20955th Street.
Right. Uh, this is Lynn Haven, Mr. Woods District. I think everyone, I'm not for the districts. Everyone votes on everything, so, um, anyway, this is at the North End, 20955th Street. And, um, you know, the North End is, actually, Mr. Tajin. Uh, I would love for one of y'all to ask him, since he can't answer now. He was asked, uh, the last meeting, how many short-term rentals there were at the North End, and he said, I think he said about 54. I think there's probably more than that. But also, I would like to know how many short-term rentals there are in the entire city. And I think we have a right to expect him to be able to give that information before you vote on anything. You voted last time without him, uh, having that information available. Okay?
Um, the last item is item seven, short-term rental, um, for Nick Trevon at 42121st and a half Street.
Okay. Again, old beach. Yeah, the issues are, um, you know, parking? And, um, you know, there's, there's just too many. Everybody, you know, wants an investment. Even in Croatan, people are, are selling their homes because you still haven't fixed the sand. They're paying all this money for sand on the beach. The sand hasn't been fixed. And with crime and the, the taxes, people are leaving beautiful neighborhoods. It used to be just the poor neighborhoods that weren't safe. I think the, um, the problem should be addressed in, uh, in Lake Edward and, where was it? On Norfolk Avenue, Ninth Street, and Bird Neck, Atlantis Apartments. We need to take care of all neighborhoods and, and make sure there's no crime in their neighborhoods because everyone who lives there isn't involved in crime. Thank you.
That's all the items that were considered for consent that...
Okay, thank you, Ms. Messner. Okay, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, could you kindly do the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, move for approval under the consent agenda. Following items under ordinances and resolutions, ordinances to amend City Code Section B 2-129, Ray Employee Grievances, C 7-58.1 and 7-59.1, Ray Allow Operation of Motorized Scooters in the Resort Area and on the Trolley Lanes of Atlantic Avenue, noting that Mrs. Wilson and I am both voting no on that. Item two, resolution to direct the city purchasing agent to include a Virginia Human Rights Act provision in all city contracts, and that's the revised version that Mr. Berlucci handed out earlier today. Item three, ordinance to authorize a gas pipeline easement across a portion of the city's Lake Gaston Pipeline property located in Greenville County, Virginia, to Columbia Gas of Virginia Incorporated to declare such easement to be in excess of the city's need, noting that Mr. Moss is abstaining on this item. Item four, resolution to establish a community task force regarding evaluating transitioning the Convention and Visitors Bureau to a new organizational structure, and that's with Mr. Rouse's alternative that was passed out earlier that has the, uh, sports marketing representatives added there, noting that Mr. Moss is voting no on that item. Item five, ordinance to approve a cooperative agreement between the City Council and the School Board regarding legal services provided to the School Board and School Administration by the city attorney in FY 2021, noting that Mr. Moss is voting no on that item. Item six, ordinances, Ray City Appointee Compensation for FY 2021. A, acting city manager noting that Mr. Moss is voting no. B, city attorney noting that Mr. Moss is voting no. C, city clerk. D, city real estate assessor noting that Mr. Moss is voting no. E, city auditor. Item seven, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments in a portion of city property known as West Canal located at the rear of 2300 Windward Shore Drive regarding construct and maintain an existing wharf, boat lift, and bulkhead. Item eight, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into city-owned easement over Bay Lake Beach located at the rear of 43004 Sandy Bay Drive, Ray construct and maintain a beach access walkway with stairs. Item nine, ordinance to appropriate $168,700 of fund balance from the police, federal, and state Seized Assets Special Revenue Fund to the FY 202021 Police Operating Budget Regarding Equipment and Training.
I reopen the public hearing on planning.
Item J two, BQ Ventures LLC for conditional use permit, Ray short-term rentals at 40623rd Street, units A1, B1, and B2 in the Beach District, noting that Ms. Henley, Mr. Moss, and Mr. Jones are voting no. Item six, Christopher J Masaro, Christopher J Masaro Revocable Trust for a conditional use permit regarding short-term rental at 20955th Street, Lynn Haven District, noting that Ms. Henley, Mr. Moss, and Mr. Jones are voting no. Item seven, Nick Trevon for conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental, 42121st and a half Street, Unit D in the Beach District, noting that Ms. Henley, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Moss are voting no. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, if we can, uh, do the vote?
Sure. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye. I would like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor, at the conclusion of the vote, if I may.
Okay.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
I do want to explain my no votes at the end.
Okay.
Yes. Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you approve the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, Mr. Berlucci, then, Mr. Moss.
Well, I just want to take a moment to, um, just make note of what I think is an important, um, resolution that was adopted in this consent agenda, and that's a resolution to direct city manager, or pardon me, the city purchasing agent to include the Virginia Human Rights Act in all city contracts. This is... This is an evolution of work this council has been doing for a while, and it's a compliment to the work that's, um, been advanced by other members of this body. Organizations across the country, including, um, cities and states and the Supreme Court, have been working to eliminate discrimination, and this resolution is a good step forward in concert with that progress. I would especially like to thank and recognize the Virginia Beach professionals who are responsible for crafting this policy and for advancing it to us this evening. The credit belongs to them, in particular, the purchasing agent, um, representatives from the city attorney's office, and the STUR office, and many others. It's a positive step forward for our Virginia Beach community, um, showing once again that we are a city of openness, inclusion, and nondiscrimination. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moss?
Yes, I want to explain my abstention on item I. Three. Dominion Energy is a financial partner of some type with Columbia Gas of Virginia, and my dividends from Dominion Energy exceed the state threshold for conflict of interest, and I have filed a conflict of interest letter, you know, abstention letter with the city clerk. I voted no on the task force. I'll refer people to my remarks on June twenty-third. I see no need to repeat that, but I do not find this to be an objective, uh, policy that we're pursuing. I think the answer's already been concluded. With regard to voting no on the cooperative agreement, more than on one occasion and almost, I'd say, two or three times a year, I have sought opinions relative to school board actions, but the city attorney is unable to provide me an opinion as to the legality of their acts because they're also his client, which would then cause me to have to come to the council as a whole to go to a private perm and pay a private lawyer. I think this council shouldn't find itself with the city attorneys in conflict when the city council and the school board may be in conflict. They should get their own attorney, and we should remove that conflict of interest. And that's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, uh, moving on, uh, the first item up for, uh, discussion is under ordinances, resolution number one, and that is ordinance to amend the City Code Sections of one dash twelve point two, Ray increase courthouse security fee imposed upon persons convicted of criminal or traffic offenses. This was deferred from June sixth, twenty-twenty, requested by Sheriff Staley. Any speakers?
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Okay. Would you repeat the item again? There's so many.
This is one A.
One A, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Increase the courthouse security fee. This was, uh, deferred and, you know, um, this is like the worst time to be increasing fees. It's double. You're doubling the fees on people. Convicted of criminal or traffic offenses. I think everyone here knows that, uh, a lot of times people are, are convicted that aren't guilty, but either way, um, I just think there's too many fees. I, I think at one point, there were over five hundred fees, and you're just nickel-and-diming everybody, and this is the worst time ever to be asking taxpayers to be, uh, you know, some people go to court that aren't, uh, you know, criminals. They go there to support them. I just think that these, uh, these fees are outrageous. I think we have, um, nearly three billion dollars debt. You're not paying down the debt. You're increasing the debt. And, um, yeah, I'm in opposition.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, at this point, uh, we'll call for, uh, motion in a second, then discussion. Oh, yeah?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Okay, okay, discussion. Mr. Moss?
This evening during the informal discussion, we had a quite enlightening conversation, I think, on many parts. I think the public needs to know that this first came to us as a request for revenue with no justification of why the revenue was needed, and secondly, without any explanation of the historical revenues and historical expenditures. Tonight, we had a brief presentation by the sheriff, who did a great job of talking about their prior expenditures, but we never heard a real conversation about what was the requirement and what would be the specific expenditure for the additional money. And I know the public can understand percentages very well, so the three-year average that we've collected on this fee at ten dollars was four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So you can basically say forty-five thousand citations, 'cause you get ten dollars on each one. So forty-five thousand people paid that ten dollars. And so forty-five thousand people, on an average basis, would pay this and this year's budget, an extra ten dollars. Well, that's a doubling of the fee. That's nine hundred and something thousand dollars. But the budget last year was only five hundred thousand. We really think that the budget this year would have been double the last year? I don't think we had a single thing. Whole budget only went up one point seven percent overall. So clearly, there isn't a, a need specifically for security, because the conversation that followed talked about what was our ability to supplant funds and could we move the funds around? Well, then it was pointed out that these funds would specifically have to go, and I think it was line item one forty-nine, which was five point one million dollars, and they, by the legislation, could only be used for security efforts. And so if the courts are truly not secure to the tune of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, then we should raise this fee and spend four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to make the court safer per the actual purpose of the legislation. But no one offered, and no one said, and no one prescribed that here's how unsafe we are or should be safer, and here's what that four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars would be spent for, for the purpose for which the General Assembly said we should raise it for, security, not supplanting city clerk salaries. It reminds me of the lottery, when they said, oh, the lottery money's gonna go to education, and it did. But all the money that came from the general fund went off to something else, and there was no net gain for education. We all experienced that, and many of us have talked about it. Well, here, we're gonna have a big increase for security, and all the things we talked about tonight and all the conversation, not myself, was all the other things we could then spend four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars on because we really didn't need it for security. My view, looking at this thing, and I shared it with all my colleagues in an email last night, at best, you maybe could justify three dollars, but I could live with five. But doubling, doubling this fee with no underlying, I test anyone up here today and tell me, what is those specific expenditures that we're authorizing? Because budgets authorize expenditures as well as money, and we haven't amended the sheriff's budget, so we don't know what those expenditures are. But we are appropriating, or we are levying a tax, in effect, a fee, on forty-five thousand users of the court system. They might have multiple offenses, so it could be a smaller number, but some forty-five thousand tickets that would qualify for this fee, and we can't tell anyone the specific sheet that this is what you're gonna get for your forty-five, for that ten, extra ten bucks. Now, you could make an argument that security of the courthouse is like stormwater management. Everybody benefits who goes into the court system being safe, whether you're a lawyer or whether you're innocent or whether you're guilty. So why is it that just the guilty pay for a security fee that everyone in the court system enjoys? You're making a certain group, which generally tend to be the most disadvantaged of our community, who find themselves paying those fines. This is just not right, and it's certainly not the right process. This, this public also needs to know that this resolution came to us a week ago, and all it has was a request to raise money. No justification of why it was needed, no purpose. It was no staff work. I understand the sheriff is elected. I appreciate that, but no one should be getting a free pass from analysis. No one should be getting a free pass for justification. Everyone who's asking us to take additional money out of people's pockets by the power of our vote, which is coercion, should have to make a case. Tonight, we heard lots of things that might do, but we didn't hear something specifically that he was going to do, but yet he's asking us to double a fee. How do you double your budget from one year to the next? You all may be satisfied that that makes a lot of sense. I just want the public to understand, I think we owe them greater due diligence, greater intellectual curiosity, and we should demand more specificity before we increase a fee on people. The fact that they're guilty doesn't make any difference. We're still ought to have a justification relevant to the legislation that said we're passing it for, and this, we have not made the case. I'm voting no.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Abbott?
Sorry. So I, I shared in the informal my frustration. Again, we had a same-day briefing with a vote. My frustration is not directed at the sheriff. My frustration is completely directed at this body. We, well, I'll back up. When this came to us on June sixteenth, we, as I recall it, discussed as a group that we did not have sufficient time to vet the issue. And then we get to today, and we have a briefing, and we have some discussion, which I'm glad we had some, but we're still in the same point. And I, I have questions about, you know, the sheriff made a really great point that I wrote down. He said, what we're deciding on today is who do we want to pay for courthouse security, which is a real legitimate question. What I want to know is if we're gonna impose this additional fee, I want to know what percentage of people convicted of a crime, 'cause that's who's paying this fee, pay on time or before a due date, because I think that's relevant to the collecting of this money. I want to know of the people who pay late, what is the average time span elapsed to collect this fee? Because I think that impacts them financially. And of, if the fee is increased, what would be the total financial impact of the late fees and percentage-wise collected on those people who are already most likely disadvantaged in our system and their financial burden? I think that these questions are worthy of explanation because they have an impact on people who, who may have been convicted of a crime but are no less worthy of a legitimate explanation. And it would be my wish that we defer this again, but I don't, I don't think that that's the case. I, I don't feel like we've heavily vetted whether or not we should impose this additional fee on people. I think we have to ask ourselves, do we have systemic issues in our court systems, in our fee systems, in all aspects of our local government? Are they, are they disenfranchising people in an inadvertent way? And how do we reform them to make it so that it's fair? And that, and that is my concern. So I, I'm gonna go ahead and throw a substitute motion out to, to defer, um, for an indefinite deferral, so we can have real discussion on this issue. That's my comments.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Rouse?
I would second that motion. If that's the will of council, I'll, I'll second the motion, but I, otherwise, I'm gonna vote no on this for the reason that's already stated. I think when it first came to us, um, I think it was, I think it was really, you know, I know it's not the sheriff's fault, but it was really disrespectful how, how it was presented to us, just on one piece of paper, and you're asking us to double a fee that we don't necessarily know the outcomes of. One of the other things that's, that's most important, we don't have all the information, is, um, when you read this increased courthouse security fee imposed upon persons convicted of criminal or traffic offenses, who, who are those people who are, um, convicted? What are those statistics looks like? What is, who are this, who are this most, um, impact? I think we understand the systemic of issues we have already within our criminal justice system, and that just doesn't mean sentencing and jailing. It means also traffic offenses, and how does that impact our community? And without the information presented today or last, or last Tuesday, I cannot in good conscience vote, um, for this and without more information, but, but also, um, raising a fee, doubling the fee, I don't, I didn't hear any justifications for doubling a fee from last year or, um, to this year. So I'll be voting no on this, um, but if it's will of a council, I'm willing to defer to get more information.
All right, we have a substitute motion on the floor. Any discussion? Okay, so we'll be voting on the substitute? Okay, the substitute is to defer.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
No.
Councilmember Henley?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
No.
Mayor Dyer?
No.
So by a vote of five to six, that substitute motion failed.
Okay.
So the main motion, Mark, is that correct, comes back?
Okay, so we're voting on the main motion now.
And that was by Vice Mayor Wood and seconded by Councilmember Wilson. So, is there discussion?
Any other discussion at this point? Okay.
Councilmember Abbott? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, ma'am clerk, just one more comment. I just want to put in context the amounts here. We're, we're talking about less than a half a million dollars in terms of the increase, but the total budget for the operations of a courthouse are over five million dollars, and that includes security. This is a security fee and use for security. I just wanted to assure people from my, I have, I have it on very good authority from someone who's worked many years in the courthouse, um, that there is a need for at least this much additional security. The courthouse security is not satisfactory. I think the sheriff would, would tell you that. We didn't have an opportunity to explore that in depth, which is one reason why I voted to defer it, because I thought he should be given an opportunity to have more of an explanation for that. I just hope we understand that it's abs, gonna be absolutely necessary for us to fund additional security for the courthouse to, uh, meet the requirements of the independent investigation and any standard in terms of protection of the courthouse. Unfortunately, like many other buildings, the courthouse building wasn't necessarily designed in a way that facilitates, uh, the kind of security you need, uh, for that, and, and there are a number of improvements need to be made. So I wanted to put it in context of, of this amount. I'm gonna vote for this, uh, but the, the reason is because I think it's clear to me, and perhaps I know more than others of you do, and I understand that, it's clear to me that we need at least that much more security investment in the courthouse, at least a half a million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse.
You know, I wouldn't necessarily disagree that, uh, if that's the case, our courthouse needs more security. I, I think, but this isn't the way. This isn't the way to do it. I don't think it should be on the backs of those who are most disadvantaged and that we find ways of increasing fees on, um, those who are, who are most disadvantaged or, or those who have to go to court for criminal or, or traffic offenses. I think if it's really a priority of council to better, um, better provide safety for our, our buildings, then we'll find a way within the budget to get that done. But imposing a fee on those who are most vulnerable in our, in our, in our city and our community is, is definitely not the way.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Ms. Henley, and then Ms. Abbott.
Well, I thought Sheriff Staley did a very good job of explaining the, the, the user fee and how it was to be spent, and I will, thought he did an excellent job. I wouldn't want to ask him to come over and do it again, so I'm voting for it.
Okay, Ms. Abbott.
I, I, I appreciate Mr. Tower's insight, and I, I don't disagree. I think funding security for the courthouse is a priority and should remain a priority of ours. I, I have a lot of hardship with, with the way that, that these systems seem to work. We live in a world where, you know, you, you're a, a, a single parent who's trying to make ends meet, and you speed, and you get your ticket, and you go to court, and you hope things will, will go your way, and they don't. And, you know, you pay your fee, or you try to pay your fee, you don't pay your fee, you get set up on a pay plan, uh, and then, you know, next thing you know, your insurance goes up, and, you know, then you're, you know, that stress adds, adds to your life, and then you get, you go speeding again. And our system is not built to make life easier on people, and it is certainly not built to make, to create better outcomes. It is built to keep the poor, poor. And I have a serious problem with that. And I greatly respect Sheriff Staley, and I greatly respect his ability to find creative ways to fund our needs, and it, we, we can take a lot of lessons from that. However, I can't close my eyes tonight and say I supported a system that perpetuates keeping the poor, poor, and so I will be voting no.
Hey, anybody else?
I do, please.
Yeah, John?
I'll leave it to the viewing public to judge, you know, how good the people's explanations were and how good the discussion was, and I think, I trust, always trust the people's judgment. But I do know, I'm not in receipt of any letter from the senior judge saying that the courthouse building was unsafe. We just concluded the budget. It was just effective July the first. I haven't seen any letter from the sheriff that provides us this detailed list of deficiencies that says we can't, we're operating unsafely, and here's the... that says we can't, we're operating unsafely, and here's the immediate things that I need to do, and I need money right away, because he might not be able to wait for the fee. If the situations are such that he is, we should be addressing them immediately and looking at our reserve for contingencies. Who would want people going into the court building when they're going to be unsafe? But I'm not in receipt of either of those transmittals. Maybe you all are. But I think we have to collectively be knowledgeable, not singularly knowledgeable, about a condition of that building. But if we're making an appropriation, which in fact we will be doing indirectly, raising this fee, then we should be in receipt of something. And then, to the points that Councilman Rouse and Council Lady Abbott raised, just what the impact, and is public safety of a building really something that should be a fee? You know, we're not charging a fee to come into our building. We don't charge people a security fee when they file a zoning application. You know, I think we just have to think about the approach that we've taken. I understand that he thinks the General Assembly is always willing to give us a bill to pay their responsibilities, but that doesn't mean that we have to choose that's the way to pay it when it has a disparate effect. And I think that's the point that's being raised on top of the process issues. But like I said, I will leave it to the public viewing this, to view whether or not, when they go, when they pay that extra $10, they can say compliments of the Virginia Beach City Council. And that's who gets the credit for it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Belucci? Did you have a?
No, no comments.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
No.
Councilmember Belucci?
Yes.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
No.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
No.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of seven to four, you approve the motion to approve.
All righty, we're moving on to item 10, which is ordinance to accept and appropriate $39,258,497 from the United States Department of Treasury through the CARES Act, Ray Coronavirus Relief.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Good evening. For those who who haven't been to many meetings. Okay, first, okay, you said item 10, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This is regarding the CARES Act funding?
Right. Okay, yeah. This, all this money, it's just like after the mass shooting, all the money that was sent, the tragedy fund, Centerra's building, everything, all this money does not go to victim families. It doesn't go where it's supposed to go. And for the people who are just starting to come here and you see the seven votes, people grandstand, but it's a supermajority vote, and they always have the supermajority. And a lot of the people that do the grandstanding, you know, are running for office. And they voted for all these big projects. Okay. I'm going to use this opportunity again. I held this up the wrong way before. But these meetings, I do not consider to be legal, because I have copies of the documents. It's not due process. There isn't proper time. And the documents are scribbled. They're initials. There's no witness. And the thing I looked up about the city clerk is, one of her duties is the keeper of the seal. It's also to witness all documents, all official documents. That isn't the case. So, yeah, most of these meetings, you know, the vote should be vacated. And I've been wanting to make, you know, on public safety. You know, where were the marches for Lakeeta Brown, for Ryan Keith Cox? He doesn't even have his name on that building. It's a teeny little plaque. Joshua Hardy, you know, he was one of the heroes. Kate Nixon, one of the heroes. All these people, you know, have not even been honored. None of you showed up when Kate Nixon's husband and everyone else came there on Memorial Day. You know, I don't know how you all sleep at night, but I'm glad I still have enough anger and frustration with you after 30 years to say what's on my mind. And I love this, been wanting to make this for a long time.
Thank you very much.
I'm not finished.
Thank you, Ms. Messner.
Stop corporate welfare, relocate king of nepotism to the bottom of the sea.
Thank you, Ms. Messner. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Your vote was duly noted.
That's all, the speaker, sir.
Okay, at this point, there were some questions for Mr. Adams. So, I think, you know, maybe before, you know, we get going, you know, we just may get some clarifications, if that's possible. Does anybody have any questions or clarifications for Mr. Adams? Okay?
I'll yield to Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones, and then Mr. Moss.
Sure.
I'm positive.
My question, and I asked it earlier, Taylor, but you weren't here at the time, and was, we have the money that we'd already allocated for benefit or to help people because of the coronavirus issues. And you set up a system as to how you would determine who got that money.
Yes, sir.
Now, this is a little bit different, but how do you have a plan for how you're going to distribute this money and what the prize list is going to be?
I do, yes, sir. And first, good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor Council. I apologize for not being here at your informal session today. This, nobody's fault but my own. But to come back to that, I have had, I have had a moment to watch the video of the conversation that happened earlier, and so I think I can provide some context. First, to that point, yes, sir, as you all know, two and a half million dollars has already been appropriated for what's called EDIP Part E. That was intended to be specifically for small business assistance coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic. Councilmember Moss, to the question, I'm sure, and I'm sure I'm going to get from you. Last, the last time we talked about this, I expressed some concern that we had not gotten exactly to the places that we wanted to get to with this money. And I'll share some context as to why that is. Also, quickly, this is a good, this is a good place for me to hit a question about outreach. Just so that you all know, we had, and to your, and this is part of the answer to your question, Mr. Jones, we had 497 applications for the program in two weeks. Every zip code in the city was represented, and also by an extension, every council district. We saw every sector of our economy, with one exception, we did not, that I know of or that I do not recall seeing a defense contractor specifically apply. Obviously, that's a big piece of our economy, but the rest of our economy for manufacturing hospitality was covered. On the outreach question, we estimate, Councilmember Wooton, this will sound familiar, because this is the same number I gave at the IGNITE series a few weeks ago, we anticipate that between 10 and 10 and a half thousand, so between 10,000 and 10,500 Virginia Beach businesses were notified that the program was in existence. Also, it's important to note, and that would be notification through either emails that were directly sent by us, because this is a business that was in our database, or through one of the chambers of commerce in the region that we reached out to, most notably Hampton Roads Chamber, the Asian American Chamber, the African American and Black Chamber of Commerce, two different entities. But then also, moving on from that, that list went to all of our SWAM contacts that the purchasing department maintains, which also includes the Virginia SWAM list. And so, we can tell you that there was vast outreach. In addition to that, the notification in the public meeting, as well as two press releases, one by the city, and two, and then two by other business organizations, that just picked up the release and circulated it. I do not recall the pilot, I don't have any evidence to suggest that the pilot covered this. I'm not sure why. I can just tell you that that's a quick summary of the outreach that was done. Here are some of the challenges that we have seen specifically. And it gets into how do we identify small business. I should also mention and extend thanks to the city auditor, Lyndon Ramirez. He and I have worked fairly closely over the last two weeks to figure out what could be a road forward as to how we would spend this money. Some things that we saw, first, what's an employee? For the restaurant, for restaurateurs, this in particular is a real challenge. Our policy just, our policy just says employee. It does not say FTE. It's silent on the definition of employee. So, there were, there are businesses in the pool that claim to only have three, in the pool of applicants, that claimed to only have, only have three employees. We look at their website. Their website boasts over 500. We dive into that. We find out the vast majority of those are 1099 employees that are working on commission. Lyndon brought that to my attention. He and I looked at it together, and I'll get to what I think is a solution here in just a minute. Also, we're finding that the need in this space is broader than we expected. We knew that, we knew that we were dealing, that we would see heavy impact in hospitality and retail. That's absolutely been true. One of the things that we think is very important, and that the data, the national data in particular is showing, as well as our state and local data as we work forward, is to, to the best of our ability, keep this pandemic-caused recession isolated to the sectors of our economy that have already been, that have been most impacted, and not let it spread into sectors like advanced manufacturing and defense. And so, we see that there's a real need to get into that space as well. And most notably, we want to talk about ongoing impacts as we move into recovery for restaurateurs and hospitality providers, but also for healthcare providers and for manufacturers. And that's really getting, and that's getting into the space. So, I talked to a restaurateur yesterday who's spending $200 a week printing paper menus right now, and is going to be doing that for the foreseeable future. And that's, that's an unexpected cost. Also, vast increases in the cost of PPE, and also losses attributable to having lower seating capacity and things of that nature. So, in talking it through with Lyndon, some things we found about EDIP Part E is that it's just, it's a little unwieldy on the administration side, and by a little, I mean a lot. It's hard for us to accurate, it almost compels us to be in a space where we are picking between losses, which is, which is never a good place for the public to be, because regardless of what you do, if you are living out of that business, all you know is that you have a loss. And so, as Lyndon and I have talked through it, one of the things that we think we can improve, as we look at this larger pot of money, is to get into the space of specifically looking at reimbursable costs. So, what we would, what we would like to do is build the program around that. So, if you're a business that is having an ongoing need, or an ongoing cost that is directly attributable to this virus, like the purchase of PPE, like additional printing costs to meet, to meet the governor's objectives, the, in addition to PPE, Councilmember, this is where the thought about reconfiguration of workspaces came from. That was really intended to be something for the defense industry and for the manufacturing sector. But I take your, just so you know, I take your point on the impact of that and hospitality in other places. Might need to tighten that up a little bit. But what I, but what I would say is, our plan would be to build this around a reimbursable system where a business brought us proof that they had experienced a cost that was directly tied to the, to this virus, and then we would reimburse them for it. The size thing matters to us. And so, one of the things that we thought that might make sense is to put a cap. And this is me admitting, once again, we're building a plane as we fly it. I might ask to do this for 90 days and come back and report and tell you how we're doing, and see if there's a tweak that's needed. But we had thought that perhaps a $50,000 or $75,000 maximum award made sense, because what it does is it keeps me from having to dig into the space of what is an employee? Is it an FTE? Is it a part-time employee? And it puts us in the space where we can, where we can let the dollars basically scale to the size of the business. So, there would be a maximum amount that would be available. And no matter who you were, that's all there was, and you've got to make a determination as to whether it makes sense. We also think that the direct reimbursement cuts to the issue of how, something that we heard, I mean, now, our application is less than four pages long. But we have heard that even at four pages, it is onerous for some of the smallest businesses in our community to fill out. We think that moving into a reimbursement mode also streamlines the process for the smallest businesses and exposes us to a broader pool of businesses. And so, that's a lot of information. I'll stop for a second and take any, take any questions that may have come up.
Mr. Moss?
I took your number, $75,000. That would mean if you, because you didn't, I don't know how people are going to show up, first come, first served. That's a question I will leave it. But that would mean we'd only have 193, if everybody walked in and had that max. So, that gets back to, in reality, you really can't. So, this gets back to my issue is, you know, you can, you can spread money so thin that everybody still drowns.
Yes, sir.
I understand that. Or you can concentrate your resources to some extent, and some people, like some of the winners that you pick among the losses, they survive. You spread it too thin, all the losses, no one survives. But now, you're getting back to what my part has been from the very beginning, is generalities are great, but in the end, it's specific. So, when someone says we're going to do reimbursable, and that's great, because it solves issues with audit and all those kinds of things, because you don't put the money out till you got the documentation that meets the audit requirements, you have a central account, you put all the receipts in there, it's image, and it makes the GIO extremely happy, and then us happy, because we don't have to pay for a mistake. But it doesn't address, the point is, when you get in, when you get in the line for reimbursement, is it first come, first served? Or do you have a period of saying, we're going to take reimbursements over the first 30 days, we're going to, we're not going to make any payouts, we're going to take and see how many we get? And then, you have to look, is it such a big issue that you don't want to pick, that you just lottery it out and say you cap it at 25? But I think this is the kind of, I understand why you don't know what you don't know.
Yes, sir.
But if we're willing to acknowledge that we're not going to set the parameters for how we're going to reimburse people till we know the universe of the filings, and whether or not that universe exceeds our availability, it seems to me that the rules have to, the methodology for deciding the allocation of the money should follow, once you know how big the pool is, to include the nonprofit piece, to include what part, because, you know, in the briefing you gave, which was very good, I mean, I appreciate that briefing very much, it was excellent, where you showed $9 million for business, I think it was eight or something, $6 million for residents, which had the nonprofits, and what came to this 14?
Yes, sir.
But when we got the resolution, it's just 14. It just says economic support. There's no delineation of the universe that qualifies for that.
Yes, sir.
So, if we were thinking that that's the universe, and we don't want to leave out nonprofits, and we don't want to leave out something for residents, realizing we've got money in some other pots for residents, too, just like for business. There ought to be some kind of categorization of that 14 million among those three pieces. So, you've got three plates you're passing money out of, you know, rather than, I think that's what people want to walk away knowing here, not just we wrote a check from the government for 14 million, but that each of the major stakeholders in our community, which is the business community, which is the nonprofits, which is something for residents, and maybe the residents should only be 2 million, and nonprofits should be 2 million, and maybe this should be 10. But whenever you get your little circle drawn, and you got your money stacked, and you're like MacDuck, you know, and the busy thing, your cartoon, you're passing out the chips. If I got $20 million of people wanting reimbursements, but I got 10 million bucks, and I don't want to pick the winners and the losers, and that's such a, what's going to be our way of? That's what I think we need to know before you start dispersing the money.
So, and to that point, I agree. What I would, what I would offer is two criteria in that space that we are considering, the first of which is, if you received, would be a binary factor of, did you receive EDIP Part E funding or not? So, if we know that that, that program was oversubscribed in 10 days, so I would tell you, if you are one of the lucky, give or take, 230 businesses into 250 businesses that will ultimately be in that pool, then I would tell you that you would not, that basically we could not consider you in the first cut of this additional funding. The second piece of that would be, and I will tell you procedurally, I'm going to have to figure out how to do this, but But one of the things I learned in EDIP Part E is that because the applications came in so fast, and there were so many, and the need was so great, I do think we're probably looking, to avoid picking winners and losers, I do think we're looking at something akin to a lottery system at this point, where we would take applications for, I would say, let's go for three weeks. And I'm basing that solely on the experience of us having 500 applications in 10 days last time. So I would say, let's, let's run for three weeks, close it. At that point, there would need to be a scoring of completeness. So we would, but we envision a much simpler process, which is simply show us these, show us these results, and then we would, we would adopt some random process to select winners out of that pool until the money was gone.
Follow-up question, Mr. Rick.
Yes, sir.
This is, I think this is an important discussion, and I appreciate your candidness.
Yes, sir.
So in this particular case, we didn't, we didn't identify the purposes of what economic support constituted. So did this economic support, as it's in the resolution that we're adopting, or would be, might be adopting, how would, how are you defining that for the purposes of your implementation?
How am I defining?
Like, is that businesses, nonprofits, and residents? Is it just business and nonprofits? What are the eligible categories of entities? And I hate to call a person an entity, but for the purpose of this discussion, the entities that are eligible under this broad construct of economic support?
So, and so I would, Andy Friedman's not here with us, so I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Andy. But obviously, he would do a better job than I could of speaking to specifically the housing and resident-focused portion of the, of the program. For me, for what my office would look at, I envision that it would be businesses, and we would define a business as someone operating in Virginia Beach for 12 months, that's got a current business license, and then the not-for-profit community.
So if this resolution, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth because I'm just listening, I'm trying to help us on specificity. So if this 14,500,000 for economic support, that includes support to residents, realizing that would be Andy's pot of money, businesses and nonprofits. So that would delineate the pool of things that are covered. Now, in the presentation you made last week, there was a breakdown between those two amounts into two broad categories.
Yes, sir.
And that's not broken down in this particular appropriation, in this particular act. And I'm just asking for some specificity that can get us all on the same page. So this really, then it's 14,500, but it really is on a subset. It's X millions, whatever that is, 6.8 or whatever it is, and then it's 9 point whatever for these businesses and nonprofits or in the residence group. Can, can we get a resolution that has that specificity on it? Because then that tells me, now, now we're providing direction. This just, I'm giving the like check, but I'm not identifying the purposes that says, hey, this is where the nonprofits fall, this is where the businesses fall, and this is how much money is available.
Mayor, Council.
Yes, please.
I think absolutely we would take that direction. As Alice was explaining earlier during the workshop, that what she was seeing, and the reason the ordinance was written broader, is that the fact that the, those regulations continue to be promulgated, and we get different guidance, and so was asking for some flexibility. But the intent behind it is absolutely, the briefing that you received with the breakdown that you saw on the tables that were in the, in the PowerPoint, however, we will definitely take the specificity. And if they need to be altered and some shifting amongst, based on the demand of applications, we would absolutely come back and suggest some amendments to that.
And one last follow-up, I couldn't, as I'm trying to get to some consensus here, I hope, is I assume that before we start actually doing disbursements, that you will come back and tell us the mechanism by which you plan on doing that before you do it?
My sense is that's where, what we're kind of agreeing to with you this evening, that that's a great evolution. We're happy to do that. I think especially with understanding how the EDIP and dispersing that has, has taken a while. We would absolutely know that we need several weeks of application opportunity. We can vet it. And really, in that 14 and a half million, you know, we used a category that's in the CARE Act as economic assistance for the eligibility. Typically, we would look at economic development assistance, obviously, that's, that's the one pot. Andy has a pot, and then there's still the human services application too. So it's really kind of three pools blended in there of the individuals and the businesses.
So this worth a read, and just add, I'm trying to make this as sensible possible. If we just added it on line E, if people are looking at item E, economic support to include residents, businesses, and nonprofits, period, that would be acceptable?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay.
That works for me.
Anybody else? Okay, let's go Ms. Wooton and then Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Adams, thank you for providing the information regarding outreach. And I don't deny that those avenues that have been used in the past have served a purpose. However, but what I'm hearing, and as was made clear today by Councilmember Wilson, there are still people who are not getting the information. And if our goal is to address the most vulnerable residents, the most vulnerable businesses, particularly focusing on, you know, our minority businesses and the disparity in those areas, we really need to either revamp or add to our strategy, you know, to include some of the business groups that are out there on social media, who I certainly communicate with, and I see quite a few of them, and they may not have that information. In terms of reaching other businesses, churches, there are quite a few members in churches who have their own businesses, they are entrepreneurs, they love to have access to that information. And then as it relates to residents who need the information, just something I can also address with Mr. Friedman, reaching out to the food banks in different places. That information needs to be disseminated in those areas so that we are sure that we are reaching those most vulnerable communities. That is our goal.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. That is, that is great feedback for us. I will admit, one of, one of our deficiencies is, I would love to say that we know who all of the businesses in the community are. We just, we just simply don't. But, but, but what a, and what's great about the pool that we've seen so far, over two-thirds of the businesses that applied for assistance under this program have never, have never had a formal engagement with our office before. So I would tell you, we're, we're very excited that we are reaching new businesses with this pool than we've seen in the past. But what, but Mr. Williams had what I thought was an inspired idea earlier. I don't want to speak for the Commissioner of the Revenues because he is not here tonight. But one of the things that, that Ron mentioned that we might do, and I thought it was a great idea, is work with the Commissioner to do a direct mail piece to every business license holder in the community. And that's something that, we're in a new fiscal year now, and I have, I have a new allocation of marketing dollars, so this is absolutely something that I could do. If that was the will of this body, I would be delighted to, to work with the Commissioner's team, to see if there was a way that we could get a direct mail piece about this program to every business in the community. Obviously, we understand if we were to do that, that would have to be sent and delivered before the, before the application window opened. Now, I don't know if that's something we can do or not, because that was just an idea that we had this afternoon. But I take your point on us doing a better job of getting to places where we've not been before. And so we'll, we'll take that, we will take that, that advice.
And I'm willing to help, and I'll reach out to you and see what I, how I can be of some support. I'm happy to do the late work on that.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
John, I want to thank you for your discussion of dividing that up and making it really simple for us tonight. That's, I think that's a really good solution. I like the idea of the mailing. And if you just do a postcard, send it out bulk, it really wouldn't be that expensive. A postcard really wouldn't, it's not as much as a letter, so it would be fairly inexpensive. I do have a concern that if the grants are 75,000, as John said, that's not that many people to, to serve. And, you know, we want to make it meaningful.
Sure.
But yet be able to reach as many people as possible. Some of you had it 20,000, it would be 700. So I'm not saying that's the right number.
Yes, but what I'll say is, so I take, I mean, absolutely agree that 25,000, a maximum of 25,000 gets us to a much broader, much larger number of potential businesses. Also understand the challenge of watering down the value of the, of the award. But what I will tell you is, I am hearing from our businesses every day that anything that we can do in this space might may, for many of our businesses, will, will ultimately make the decision where they continue to operate in our community one way or the other. So, so I'm just so, so happy to have this program. If it's 25, I'm happy to start with that and see where we land.
So I think our last fee average was about 5,000 or 6,000 up to 10. And so, you know, maybe, yeah, maybe start a floor and a ceiling and try to help as many people, but make sure that it's meaningful, that it's actually going to help them, like John said. But I think this is really great, and we're lucky to have this opportunity.
We are.
But we've got to get the word out. You know, I know with the May 31st issue on the, on the boardwalk, there was someone who had just opened up their new business, and their windows were all smashed, and they didn't have insurance. They didn't know how they were going to pay for their, for their windows, and they'd have to be fixed in 30 days. And I know that's not part of this. But the, the point is, there's some small people that they don't know how to get the resources.
Yes, sir.
So that's why this mailing would be really awesome, because not everybody is tuned in, not everybody's a Chamber of Commerce, not everybody's part of these different organizations. So that would be really, really great.
So I thought it was a great idea, too. I'd love to take credit for it, but I'd give it to Ron. He came up with that one.
Yeah. But a postcard wouldn't cost that much. Thank you.
Good. Anybody else at this point?
Was there an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, I was going to say, there hasn't been a motion yet.
I was asking for amendment to item E to read economic support to include businesses, nonprofits, and residents, period. And not in the resolution, but with the understanding that before the disbursements are made, they'll come back and share with us the methodology by which it will be conducted.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion at this point? Okay, we're ready.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've adopted the ordinance as amended.
Okay, great work. Very nice collaborative effort. Okay, so we're going to open up, you know, the planning items, okay? And I guess we're going to do item number one, which was Timothy Hadlin, conditional use permit, raise short-term rentals, 4504 Ocean View Avenue, District 4, Bayside.
The first speaker is Vi Webbex, and the applicant Timothy Hadlin. Mr. Hadlin, if you'd like to begin your comments.
Are you guys able to hear me? Sorry, guys, just checking the audio, wanted to see if you could hear me.
Mr. Hadlin, if you can begin your comments, we can hear you, please.
Guys, I'm not sure if you can hear me. If so, I appreciate everyone's consideration for my short-term rental. I don't believe there's any objection to it. I've gotten the endorsement from a couple of my neighbors. Everything's been going great. I actually live right next door, so I'm able to keep an eye on the guests and making sure they're taken care of, and it's gone fantastic so far. I'm active-duty military, I'm an officer in the Navy, so I'm gone a lot. But I also have a property manager, Sierra, who is on this call as well, who overlooks it for me. So I don't really have any, anything else to say, but I appreciate the consideration, and I am standing by for questions.
We can't communicate.
The next, the next speaker is Vi Webbex, Sierra Alderman. And Ms. Alderman, you can begin your comments if you'll just wait three seconds, please, and we'll be able to hear you.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for having me. My name's Sierra Alderman. I'm the co-host with Timothy or Bear Hadlin for his property at 4504 Ocean View Avenue. It's my pleasure to represent him today. He's gone through all the necessary steps for the approval of the conditional use permit for this property. It has provided all required parking and letters of approval from neighbors. He's taken the time and has been sure to pay all appropriate taxes each month for these, for this property. I have been able to co-host this property and other properties for over two years, and I have a process for vetting guests and ensuring the guests all know that neighbors in the neighborhood are the highest priority. I make it very clear our neighbors are first and our rentals are second. All guests are aware of the noise restrictions and on a clear no-party policy. Our main so far have been families who have been respectful of the property and have not been at home for most of the day. 95% of our guests are wonderful, quiet, and respectful. The very rare couple people per year that aren't are there and gone within three to four days typically. We don't get to choose our neighbors that, that choose to have long-term tenants in their houses, or neighbors in general. But neighbors have liked that if there are any problem person in Airbnb, they're gone within a few days as opposed to 12 months like a normal long-term tenant. The applicant is a military member, and I take great pride in being able to support him in his endeavors. We would really like the consideration to proceed with the utmost priority being our neighborhood. We would greatly appreciate your approval for the application as we have met all criteria. Thank you.
The next speaker is in person, Barbara Mastner.
That was interesting. 95% of the people are well-behaved, and it took a couple of days to get them to leave. But the problem is, and the problem is a thousand times worse than it was a couple months ago when I spoke against many of these short-term rentals. There are too many, and most of them are, people are doing it for income. And you're taking away the opportunity for somebody who might want to rent an apartment year-round or to rent a property year-round. So there's less and less affordable housing. And I would like to know, it would be nice, I think I counted at least 10 city, city staff here, you know, if they could be introduced. Because you have a lot of support, and there's very few people showing up a lot for these meetings, but, you know, there's, there's problems with traffic, and there, you know, either we do or we don't have a pandemic. If we do, we shouldn't be having people, you advertise globally, shouldn't be having people coming from hotspots, you know, into people's neighborhoods. You have no idea who they are or where they're coming from. And I oppose, I think we should have a moratorium on all short-term rentals. Ocean View Avenue, Bayside. The three people who vote no, it's, it's not enough. And as I've said before, and I'll say it again on the record, that's not me on the meat, on the monitor. You know, everyone who votes for these short-term rentals, any crime or any problems with their property, or, you know, the police not being able to, to go there and take care of it, you're all responsible. Thank you.
That's all the speakers. Would you like the applicant to?
Yeah, 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 if you'd like to rebuttal.
Mr. Hadlin, if you'd like to make any additional comments, sir? You can do so after, if you just pause for three seconds and then begin.
Thank you very much, everybody. I totally understand where she's coming from, but I believe Sierra represented, you know, our application very well. We've done everything by the book. We've been doing the rental now during our interim status with no issues. If there are any issues with tenants, we do reserve the right to remove them per the policy. But up until now, as I provided with my application, the neighbors have supported it. And again, I live right next door, so I'm able to go over there if there's ever any issues, which there has not been. So I would sincerely appreciate the support. Active-duty officer in the Navy, I'm gone a lot. This is an opportunity for me to make some supplemental income, and it goes a long way. I'm a young guy, and I'm trying to build up my finances long-term and save money. So I do appreciate the opportunity, and thank you very much.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, at this point, Mr. Jones, do you make a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a few comments first, if I may.
Sure.
I, I went out to this piece of property to see it myself, and frankly, while this is, I'm sure... I'm sure, an accurate site plan, it doesn't really depict the situation of the house as it sits on Ocean View versus Ocean View Avenue. In fact, this house is behind another house that fronts Ocean View Avenue. And to get to that house, people have to drive down a driveway to get to that house along the side of the house that is in front of it on Ocean View Avenue. I have, when I went out there to look at the house, the owner of the house that is in front of it on Ocean View Avenue saw me and approached me and was adamant that he did not approve of the use of the house that has the application for short-term rental. And the reason he didn't approve it is, he says the congestion is terrible there, that the people who rent, they already have one short-term rental. I guess it's grandfathered, I don't know, but they already have one short-term rental there in that duplex, and the people who use that one park in this fellow's driveway. And he has a constant problem of having to ask people to get out of his driveway, not park in front of his house on what is a very narrow road. Ocean View Avenue is a very narrow road, and the houses are very, very close together, and it's just a very crowded situation is what it is. And the gentleman that I talked to, who lives in the house in front of it, that's really on Ocean View Avenue, was adamant that he did not want this short-term rental. And so I think that having been out there and seen the physical situation that is not very well, is not depicted at all by the picture of the house, that the answer, that the application is for, is, I think it's deceiving to us to tell you the truth. And so I'm going to make a motion to deny the application.
I'll second that, but I would act of a question if I could, Mr. Jones.
Okay, we're open for discussion.
I didn't actually go out there. So this property, there's a house in front of this house?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, when we go back, can we go back to that top view, that aerial view? So is the house in that's in blue, that's the house that we had the request for, the duplex request in it, correct?
Right. Well, no, the house is behind it.
Is the house? Oh, okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Is that not intended to be the house we're looking at? I mean, the applicant's house?
No. So it's the house that's behind that is the house that the application is for?
No, but it looks like.
I'm just trying to understand what's in blue and what's behind.
Based on Mr. Jones's description, that isn't the applicant's.
That's correct. That's why I'm just confirming, yes. I didn't go out there, that's why I was asking. Oh, well, your logic is always is very impeccable, Mr. Jones.
Yeah. Bobby, do you think we might be able to get a clarification on this?
Where does the person live, Louis, who?
Big Park.
The person who said there's parking in the driveway, which house is that?
One in the front, on this, actually on Ocean View Avenue.
Circled is blue, square is blue.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I believe there's some confusion. There is an application for this property right here that was submitted. I believe it went to Planning Commission two weeks ago. This application is for this item right here for this property, which does front on Ocean View Avenue, which is 4504, and Mr. Handlin lives at 4508, which is the other side of the duplex right here per city records. So I'm unsure if there was confusion on this item here, which there is one that has, if I remember correctly, that item has a stairwell, there are the Persian Parks, and there's a garage, and there's a shared driveway that goes to the back, which is along this property here. And again, that was considered by the Planning Commission two weeks ago, but this application is for this property right here in the front, which is this residence here, which is the duplex with the units on both sides.
Are you saying this is a different piece of property?
Yes, sir. I believe the one that may have been this property owner here that you had discussions with was concerned with this property right here, which does have a, if I remember correctly, there is a shared access easement to access the property, but that's not under consideration for you today.
All right. And I'm going to make a motion to defer it.
Okay.
So I can go out and look at it again.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for deferral, and then the primary motion? Okay, any other discussion? Okay. Okay, Mr. Wood.
Just one thing. The applicant said that, I know opposition, but I note there were four speakers in opposition at the Planning Commission.
Right.
So I'd kind of like to know why they said that. I don't know if the applicant's still on the phone.
Mr. Handlin, if you would like to respond?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. I will clarify, the gentleman who spoke recently was correct. The application right now is for 4504. Sir, I believe you were confusing it with the Seaview Avenue address. In regards to the neighbor, his name is Reese Jones. I share the building with him, and he had to sign paperwork as part of my application to endorse this application. We did have one instance where we had a cleaning lady park in front of his driveway. Mr. Jones was upset about that. That was an honest mistake, and we have remitted it. If you see in the picture, it is a very large shared driveway. It can hold six cars in the driveway and one in the garage. So the parking is not an issue at all, and it does not go into the street at all. Obviously, the area does get congested during the summer, but that's because guests are coming from, you know, other parts of the city to use the beach. You know, I did have a few people write letters to support my application. I was not at the last meeting. I've been out of the country and all over the country training, so I have not been able to attend all of them, but Sierra has attended on my behalf. So I'm not aware of any people directly opposing to my specific property, although I do understand people show up and object to all of them in the area. So that might have been the case, but I'm happy to provide any more clarification for 4504. But the recent gentleman who spoke did clarify that is the property, and the Seaview Avenue property was done through the Planning Commission, and I believe that will come to your all's desk at a later date. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay.
Motion is to defer.
Motion, the motion, primary motion is to defer.
Is there a date certain?
Indefinite.
Till the next meeting.
Till the next meeting? Okay.
Well, the next meeting is next Tuesday, is it?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have deferred this application until July 14th.
Okay, moving on to planning item three, Josetta Danner, Ray, conditional use permit, short-term rental at 518 14th Street, Beach District.
The first speaker is the applicant, Josetta Danner, and she is virtually Ms. Danner. If you would pause three seconds before beginning your comments, and we will be able to hear you.
Hello, my name is Joseph Danner. I'm with Josie Danner, my husband. It's a property that we've bought together. Thank you for having us. Thank you for the opportunity to try this in Virginia Beach, and we really appreciate the opportunity to spend more time down there and bring others to there. We do know, we've always kept a very open line of communication with our neighbors. The first thing we did was to give others, and we do know some issues. Recently, it seemed like everything was going very well last year, and I think the pandemic changed kind of the customer base, and unfortunately led to some issues. But we would like the opportunity to, we would like the opportunity to get the situation corrected. We've implemented many new rules, and Airbnb has also implemented new rules. I know one of our issues was some local rented it and had a party, and those are some of the new things that Airbnb is going to correct, is that no locals are allowed to rent. But what we would like is the opportunity to continue even probationally to do what we can to resolve the situation. Like I said, we love Virginia Beach. We spend a lot of time there, and we love its neighbors, and we absolutely love our neighbors. We have a ton of respect for them, and we want to do what's right for them as well. So I believe we do have some opposition coming, so please understand.
Matthews, I believe Mr. Matthews is here in person.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for having me tonight. And Aaron and Josie, he called himself Joseph, I know him as Aaron, and they are very nice And so I hate to have to come forward and oppose them, but I do have to come forward and oppose them for a couple of reasons, and I'll just start with, well, I'll start with today. I think that you all have a packet that I brought in. If you would, take a look at, take a look at the second page, and you see there a picture of trash cans? When the last four days, they've had two separate groups who rented, two nights each. The result was the trash that you see there. When the pickup came today, the city pickup, he wasn't able to take that trash with him. When I left home this afternoon, that trash was still sitting out there. I'm guessing by now that probably the new tenants, there were some new renters coming in today, this afternoon, I'm assuming that those renters have contacted Aaron and Josie, and so they probably know that by now. That brings up the problem, though, in that Aaron and Josie live in Stanton, so they're three and a half hours away from here, and they can't know these things unless somebody here lets them know. So it's my contention that they live too far away to be able to properly manage. Okay, so I'll take it back to July 6th, which was yesterday, and I was awakened at about 3:45 yesterday morning by the group that was renting back there then. They had, when I went to bed about midnight, all was quiet back there. Everybody was inside. About 3:45, I was wakened with loud voices. It wasn't anger. They were back there having fun and laughing and talking and so forth, but it was loud enough that it woke me up. So I texted Aaron to let him know, this has become kind of our process, to ask him to let them know to quiet down so we could go back to sleep. Well, Aaron and Josie were asleep, so I didn't get a response from them, so nothing happened. So I called 311. I called 311 twice, and to my knowledge, no police ever showed up either. I did see a patrol car come by about 15 minutes after my first call, but he didn't stop. So the result of that was that, then I was left with, okay, the police are not going to do it, Aaron and Josie are not capable of doing it, so I just kind of sat the thing out, and about 5:15 or so, everybody went back inside, and I went back to bed.
Thank you, sir.
Is that enough? I've got some more.
I have a question.
Okay, question.
Sure, yes, sir. I have a question. I don't know if you have any knowledge about the police evicting over 200 people from this property?
Yes, sir.
Could you expound on that a little bit for us, please?
Sure, be glad to. Thank you for asking that. That was pretty exciting, and it was locals. Aaron mentioned on the phone just now, he mentioned about locals renting, and apparently they put a policy now that that's not the case. I was a bit concerned the last two days when I saw all Virginia tags in the driveway again. Don't know where they were from, but that kind of sparked my antenna. But anyway, Memorial Day weekend, some renters came in, and some more came in, and some more came in, and by the time the police were called at 10:30 that night, when the police came, and I have absolutely no idea how many police officers were out there, it was cars, vans, bicycles, and horse-mounted. The street was full of police cars all around the block. It took them over an hour to get the building cleared out. This is not a big building. I'm going to guess it's 1,400 square feet or something, and it's a small yard, like our yard and most of the yards out there. By the time, it took them over an hour to get them cleared out, one police officer told me that he estimated there was about 200 people in that house. It was a mess.
Mr. Wood.
So, and sir, so it's, you're understanding that there's not a local person who manages this?
That's correct.
So you only have the people three hours away to call?
The only thing that I know about anything locally is that they have somebody to come by and cut the grass.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
A question. You don't, so you don't know the name or telephone number of a responsible person who's available to be contacted to address conditions occurring at the short-term rental within 30 minutes, other than the owner?
That's correct. Can I tell you about the process? Take me 30 seconds. We've kind of worked out a process between us, because in almost every case, when new renters come in, they're coming to the beach, they're coming to have fun and have a good time like we all do. They're coming to have a few drinks. They like to sit out in the front yard. There's a real nice patio out there, screened in. It's really nice. There's probably room for 18 or 20 people to sit out there. Invariably, in almost every case, when new renters come in, they are going to be a little bit loud. From the back of my house to the front of that patio is 22 feet, so it's less than the distance from me to you. The patio overhang acts like an amplifier, so people sitting in there and just talking in normal voices, I can sit in my living room and I can hear them. You can manage that, but give them a few beers, the jokes get funnier, et cetera, et cetera, and invariably, it ends up by nine or 10 o'clock at night, it's loud almost every time. Aaron has done the best that he could. The process is this. I text him, and I say, "Aaron, they're getting loud. Would you mind asking them to quiet down?" He does, or he calls them. Most of the time, within 10 or 15 minutes, they quiet down. I try not to do this till after 11, just feeling like that's fair. Most of the time, they quiet down. My complaint is this, that puts me in the middle of the process every time, and it just gets frustrating and tiring having to do that over and over.
Great.
So.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you for coming forward. Rick and I went to high school together, I believe.
Yes, we did, a few years ago.
A few years ago. I have a question for Bobby. So Mr. Matthews said that he called 311 twice, and nothing happened. Can, do we have any explanation on that?
When we wrote this report, this was heard by the Planning Commission on March 11th. So I believe all the instances that have come up have happened. One was Memorial Day weekend, one was just this past weekend, and so there is information that we did not have available to us because, unfortunately, because it had already gone through the commission, and we have not gotten any further report from 311 that there was an issue or there was something called in. So we are continuing to work on trying to fine-tune that with our 311 contacts. But we did not get any, as far as I'm aware, we did not get any update of a violation that was potential on this property.
And do we know when 311 is called, who the contact is? That 311 calls and says, we have a problem, and you need to react to it?
So they've, they've had, as I've had, trying to hunt this down, after Ms. Henley brought this up before previously, they've had some turnover under supervision. And so again, we believe that there's a breakdown in what process that we've tried to put together with this. And so it's unfortunate at this point in time. But we are working, trying to work, reach out to the new supervisor to, to set up a very simple process of just emailing our general short-term rental email address to give us the address. And then any of the three inspectors that have access to it can then log it appropriately. They don't have to do anything extra. But we are, we need to work it through with them because they have had some turnover.
And I have to agree with Mr. Matthews. It's really not his job to, to be the ambassador to the, the new renters twice a week to let them know what the, what the rules are. And it's, probably makes him really uncomfortable to have to do that. Thank you.
And Mr. Wood, then Mr. Tower.
Mr. Tahan, stay up there for a second.
Yes, sir.
So you said this came to planning in March?
Yes, sir.
So in March, they had a list of the 17 conditions and everything, knowing what the rules are. And in May, they had a party that looks like had 200 people in it. Looks like they're leaving trash all over the place. So basically, what, what we're hearing from, from the three of the neighbors is that since the Planning Commission, when they absolutely had these rules in their hand, they have not been following the rules. At least on several occasions.
But based on this information, that timeline aligns with your statement. Yes, sir.
That's all I need, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
Mr. Hunt, could you have the information on the, on who's provided by this applicant for this number six?
Yes, sir. So at this time, they've listed themselves when they, they do live in Stanton, Virginia, which is far away. What we do prior to them, to us giving them their approval, we review the documents to ensure that they do have a contact that's up close. Sometimes there are third parties that need to be hired, and they don't put people down immediately for us to, to know. But that is something that we would have, we would have caught when we, before we sent the approval letter, if it were to be approved by council.
So when, when this last sentence says physical response to the site of the short-term rental is not required, that was to allow this contact person to be a non-resident person, I assume? Is that right? Or simply, or what was the reason for that?
Yes, so the point was to make sure that they are able to have contact with the, with the renters. However, when it was drafted during the time, previously, it was to have someone that would be able to reach out and contact those that were renting to let them know that they need to be in compliance. So I think the code states that they have to be able to respond to the issue. And then if the issue continues, then further enforcement action would happen.
But they're not required to be, have to physically respond, apparently according to this, which I really just focused on just now.
As it is currently written, that is correct.
Yeah. I mean, if we, we were to require, as a condition of this or any others, that they have someone who was physically located in, in the city of Virginia Beach as a contact person who could respond physically, would it, would it interfere with what you're doing? Or would it aid what you're doing?
Again, there, there are a number of companies that, that do this as a third party to be the responders in this, in this market. I don't know if they are based out of Virginia Beach, then they do, they are required to be able to respond within 30 minutes. So I don't know if honing it in that tight is necessary. But I believe that's something we probably should explore to, if there is concerns by council.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm sure there's some people who can respond distantly. But it's very hard to manage a piece of real estate with intense activity from three and a half hours away.
Yes, sir.
Even when they're trying. If it seems these applicants maybe are trying, it's just a difficult task. It seems structurally, maybe we ought to consider requiring that there be somebody who is local in some fashion.
Okay. Mr. Moss.
We've been enduring, and I think that's the right word, enduring this linkage or gap in the linkage between 311 calls and action being taken. So I'd like Mr. Chandler to take back that I think this body deserves a bi-weekly progress report. And what are the barriers and why this isn't resolved? We, we've been talking about this for a long time, and we're always working on it. Well, I want to, I want to get to the point where we're not working on it because we haven't implemented it. But we've, I think we've endured this too long of I'm working on it. We need to get the link connected. It cannot be that hard.
We have an additional speaker.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Oh, ready. Yeah, thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner.
Good evening. I appreciate Mr. Matthews speaking, and he's being more than considerate. Ms. Henley, you, you brought up all the issues. You know, for somebody to be 30 minutes away, most of the issues are obviously too serious. So the person that got there would then have to call 311 or the police. I don't think this should be 311. These issues are issues that the police should be doing. I've called 311 to ask a question during the day and waited six minutes. They're overwhelmed. Yeah. This is the Beach District. It's saturated. Mr. Tajin is bringing things here without proper information. And the gentleman who, Mr. Hanlon, who said something about somebody opposing all of these. It's my free speech to give input and to speak out because our entire city is being destroyed. There are many hotels throughout the city, and the police cannot keep up. I didn't go to planning. The, the people that opposed his were at planning. And I think that Mr. Tajin should have documents, and he should prepare the city council for all of this. It shouldn't come to y'all, and we shouldn't have this dialogue, all this dialogue for one. People should not be getting second chances, you know, when they're not operating properly. We need to, you need to vote against some of these and, and not keep giving people, you know, opportunities just to make money. And, you know, it's not fair to the neighbors to have to listen to people partying and, you know, wait until 11, 10 or 11 o'clock at night to even say anything. You know, we're entitled to peaceful enjoyment of our homes. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Corral.
Bobby, can you come to the podium for a second? Just, just for the record, how do you properly pronounce your last name?
Tahan.
Thank you.
Can we ask him how to pronounce Stanton?
Thank you.
Would you like to have rebuttal from the applicant?
Yes.
Mr. Danner, if you would begin your rebuttal comments, wait three seconds, please.
Yeah, thank you. Like I said before, we, we have a ton of respect for Rick. And, you know, to be, I have to be very upfront with everybody on council here and be honest. And, you know, to even be fair, the picture of the houses, they're close. It probably doesn't even really do it justice. I don't think it's fair to say that we've had the rules and not follow them by, that there's a 0% chance we wanted to have a party of 200 people in our house. That was never in, in the interest of ours or something that we would ever allow knowingly. We called the police. We had them evicted that night. And it was awful. And I felt terrible for the neighbors and, and, you know, it stinks. I feel like we tried to do basically everything right. If we were trying to be deceiving, we'd, we'd never pass our phone numbers up to our neighbors. So I don't think it's fair to say that we've been ignoring the rules. We've been trying to do everything right. And, you know, to your point, too, having a, having a third-party helper or someone local might be a good rule. It doesn't need to be a rule for us to do it. If it will help, we happen to find ourselves at the era or someone like that. By all means, like I said, we, we love Rick. We've been doing this for a long time, not a long time, but for over a year. It was never an issue until this pandemic hit. And I'm sure you're all seeing, you're seeing the same things everywhere. We're no longer getting people that are coming to softball tournaments, or people that are coming to cheerleading competitions, or people that are coming to weddings. We're just getting people that want to get out of the house. And it's been difficult to manage, to say the least. Like I said, I'm just trying to be 100% upfront and, and honest. And, you know, we're, we're trying to just do everything we can to, to make it better. It's not like it's been a really easy time for us as well. We considered dropping it as well. We've, we've only really heard of the major two incident. I know Rick is tech'ning other times. And once again, Rick should not be the middleman or have to do anything. I mean, if anything, he should probably be on payroll. So, you know, and the trash, we've never, we're not aware of any issues before. And certainly look into it. But that's all. Thank you.
Before I ask Mr. Tower to make, you know, the motion, I just want to say, Mr. Tahan, I just want to compliment you and your department. You've been doing remarkable work with some extremely limited resources, and you do a fantastic job. Thank you. Not at this point, sir. Okay. Okay, Mr. Tower.
I'd like to move for approval. I'd like to alter with the change of condition on number six. So that it would read as follows. The owner or operator must provide the name and telephone number of a responsible person, who may be the owner or operator, or an agent of the owner or operator who's available to be contacted and to address conditions occurring at the short-term rental within 30 minutes, comma, including physical response to the site of the short-term rental if required.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Wood.
Yeah. You know, ordinarily, I like to support the district council member whenever I can. But this is perhaps one of the most egregious examples of, of a negative impact on a neighborhood that I've seen from one of these. I mean, the, the owners are not aware that as of today, this condition still exists, according to the, according to the neighbors. There's still piles of trash in front of the house. You know, the, the fact, I go back to this, I mean, they had this list, yet 200 people were in the house. 200 people. Even if it was 100 people, even if it was 50 people, look at the size of that house. You know, the, the conditions are very clear that you cannot have, you know, more, more people in the house than, than, than can stay overnight. And, and yet, this is just not being enforced. So, you know, I sympathize with the fact that they live out of town, but this should have been handled well ahead of time. This is, this is a problem that could have been resolved talking to the, talking to the neighbors. I mean, when you, when you look at these photos and you look at the second photo, where you see how close they are to this house. And you think about that, see how close they are to this house. I just, I cannot imagine supporting this. This is without a doubt one of the, one of the most egregious cases, and I absolutely will not be supporting this.
Yeah, Mr. Tower, and then Mr. Moss.
I just would respond to Mr. Wood by saying, you know, this, I, I would be amazed if there were not a number of short-term rentals where the distance was equally the same and where there may have been a party or two. You know, this is a business that's evolving. I think people that buy these are well-intended. I think they would do well to prepare themselves as well as possible. And perhaps in this case, they didn't. But I don't see the need to be punitive about somebody that's bought one because they had a party of 200 people. I think the problem is clear. What the problem is, they can't manage it from afar. If they're willing to manage it from locally and hire somebody to do it for them, I think they ought to be given the opportunity to do it. Again, it's not, as, as you folks well know, it's not because I'm in love with having a short-term rental everywhere and find one. I think there, I think we've got issues, particularly in some neighborhoods. I'm not sure this one deserves the kind of neighborhood treatment. But it deserves to be a quiet place where people, neighbors aren't disturbed. But I don't think someone who's going through the application process, given how many that are out there that aren't being, aren't in front of us, this guy just happens to be in front of us right now. I just don't think it's fair to, if I would otherwise support it, and I would, to hold against him if he's willing to take a change in, in these conditions to have somebody local. So that seems to me to be the problem.
Okay, Mr. Moss, and then Ms. App.
I do Mr. Wood's remarks, if not now, when? But that aside, since you've made the motion, which I'm not going to vote for because I believe the neighborhood deserves benefit of doubt, not the applicant. And that's what the status quo is all about. And clearly, they provided a prima facie case that their neighborhood is being disrupted and the applicant, despite the process, despite their stuff. But you said the word "if required." Now, I don't know what that means. Can you operationalize who determines what's required? Because in the end, someone has to enforce that statement. So I'm uncertain as to when an attorney says "if required," who gets the benefit of the doubt of an otherwise ambiguous statement? So who is being determining when it's required? And what would be the standard that they didn't provide it by? Because that statement by itself is like a lot of statements, says something but has no enforceability in a court of law. So what does that mean?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree to blanket saying that they wouldn't have any enforceability in a court of law. But I made that on the, on the fly, as you know. I'd be certainly be willing to defer this application to work on a better one that was applicable to everyone else. I, as I said, I, I should, I should have picked up on it before. We are allowing short-term rentals, and have allowed a number of them, to be operated from afar. And I'm not sure that's, we should have done that to begin with.
Well, I agree. I, I just thought you were offering it as a mitigation to the community that somehow in the future, they'd get a better response.
I was.
But I'm wondering if, I'm not supporting it, but I'm just trying to understand because the staff is the one that now has to enforce that. So is that at the discretion of the city to determine? In other words, they're conceding that if the city says it was required and they didn't provide it, they'd be in violation? And they're, they're, they're admitting that? Or are they saying "if required" is a contestable point? And that we'd have, therefore, the burden of proof would be on us as a city to say they're in violation by establishing the standard of what required is? Because we get into this all the time. So I'm trying to, I just want to know when the staff thinks they hear "if required," what do they think that means?
Maybe Mr. Tahan can come up and, what, what would he do with that?
I'm not sure it's a meaningful mitigation, is the point I'm raising.
I hate to make Mr. Tahan defend what I just scratched.
But you're asking us to vote for it.
Yeah, he's the enforcer.
How I listened, how I heard Councilman Towers, Councilmember Towers' condition would be that they would have to have someone that is located within a 30-minute radius of the, of the property to be able to respond. If required or not, they, they need to have someone that is, that has the ability to. So they would need to be located in that radius.
In his statement, he said, if I remember correctly, and I might be paraphrasing, so keep me honest there, Mr. Tower. He says, if, you know, had to be contact, respond within 30 minutes. And if required, they had to physically show up, physically be there. So there was one point, which was the contact, right? They had to respond within 30 minutes, right? Response doesn't mean under the current code, they had to be there physically. But his conditional phrasing was, and if required, be physically present. So that's a, so when is a condition such that their non-physically showing up would be a violation of the condition, such that they'd be in violation of their conditional use permit?
I believe it'd be easier for us to say that we would not accept anything that did not have someone that was within a 30-minute radius. Because as you said, that condition is difficult to enforce. is difficult to enforce. So we would, we would put that back to the applicant, saying you need to have someone within 30 minutes of the property so that they can respond.
Okay, so in fact, that, that statement isn't any, any mitigation at all? They wouldn't have to physically respond?
No, I, I'm sorry. They would, they would have to have someone, as, as, since we would default to the most difficult portion of that condition, we would tell them they would have to have someone that could physically respond within 30 minutes, and it has to be within that 30-minute radius of that property.
Does that mean any event that takes place, they'd have to physically show up, would be compliant?
No, it does not. It just says they would have to give us the address and contact information of someone that can physically respond within 30 minutes.
But I think it doesn't offer mitigation. I think that's clear. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Abbott.
So Bobby, please. I feel like I got confused in this discussion. We've already, we, they, they, as short-term rental operators, already have to have somebody who can respond within 30 minutes.
Not physically.
Not physically.
I'm not saying physically, but they do, they're already required to do so, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And this applicant does not have that currently, in any capacity.
Yes, they do. They, they, as he said, they went call, they responded.
They typically respond.
Typically, but not always, and occasionally, when the things are late, they don't respond at all, because they're asleep.
Well, but then, then they're not, but then they're not meeting, they, if they're choosing to be the individuals that respond, they need to be the ones responding within 30 minutes, and if they're sleeping when the complaint is made, then they're failing to respond within 30 minutes. Am I missing something?
No, ma'am. I think a key point, and I'm going to put this out here, is that they should not be operating right now.
Well, so, I think that's fair. So this is my editorial, because I think it's well-known that I generally support these, because I think it's, to some extent, it's a property right. That said, I think what we should always strive for with these types of uses, because they're in neighborhoods, is that we only get the best ones. And no disrespect to the applicant, because I would never be a landlord if you paid me a lot of, lot of money for it, because I think it's a hard job, and I think it's, especially in this capacity, is, is a lot of work. But I, I don't, I don't feel like the applicant has demonstrated that they have the ability to manage this, and so I would, I'm not, I plan on voting no.
Ms. Henley, and then Ms. Wilson.
It's absolutely unbelievable to me that this is even being discussed tonight, because we've been talking about it as a condition for over two years, and the fact that it's not absolutely set down in stone, the way these things operate and enforced, is the very reason that I don't support any of these. We've got 20 items for each of these, which are quote "requirements of the conditional use permit." We have absolutely no way to enforce them, and that's why these should not be approved until we have a system of enforcing them. It's absolutely unacceptable to put neighbors in a position of having to police their neighbors, to have to call people, to call the police, to call whomever. We have done a horrible job with short-term rentals.
I agree with that.
And then on top of all of that, we put in these very liberal conditions that nobody else in the country has: three people per bedroom, rentals of twice a week. This is a mess, and we're ruining our residential neighborhoods with these short-term rentals, and we should not approve another one until we can sit here and assure people that we're going to be able to enforce these conditions when we approve one. We know we can't enforce them. We know that there were supposed to be four inspectors as new, new employees this year. They were taken out of the budget. They don't have any enforcement capability. And until we get it together and get it right, we should not be approving a single one. I'm certainly not voting for them, and I, goodness knows, I hope we don't keep imposing these on the poor neighbors who have to be suffering through this because they get these bad rentals. It happens, it happens, and it happens.
Ms. Wilson.
I agree with a lot that's been said. Jessica, you said it very well as, as well. They don't even have their conditional use permit, and they're operating, and they're operating very poorly, and, and then we're going to reward them and give it to them? I don't think so. I mean, it's, how do we, they should have had the good sense to have someone here locally. I mean, who cleans in between everyone? Who makes sure the trash cans are taken in? Who makes sure, you know, all of the things that you have to do when you have property? And absolutely, you should have somebody local to, to check on things. And it shouldn't be your neighbor who, out of the goodness of his heart, who's been doing that, it's not his job, and he shouldn't be the go-between person. So I'm, with them not having the good sense to have had somebody here locally, I don't think we should have to tell them. They should have known that on their own. So I definitely would not support this.
Yeah, Mr. Tower.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Okay, what is the standing motion then? There is no, is there a motion?
I make a motion to deny the application.
Okay, we have a motion. Any other discussion at this point? Okay, the vote is open.
Sorry.
No, we got to do it verbally.
This is a motion to deny, right?
Motion to deny.
Correct. Thank you. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Luci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Via a vote of 11 to 0, you've denied the application of Gezetta Deanna.
Okay, moving on to item number four, under planning. Kathleen Page Simmons and Grant Simmons, conditional use for it, raise short-term rental at 3608 Dupont Circle, Bayside.
The applicant did not sign up to register to speak with my office, Kathleen Page Simmons or Grant Simmons. Are you in the, in the audience? Would you like to make comments and come to the podium, sir?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're here, obviously, applying for the conditional use permit. We followed all the planning commission in adding parking spots. We've set very restrictive criteria within Airbnb. We have not rented until we got approval, so we've been waiting since March for this meeting. So we've tried to follow on all the procedures and everything else. You know, we, we have set, once again, house rules. We live within four minutes of the property across Shore Drive, and so from our perspective, I think we're, we are the ideal folks to have with both proximity and purpose. You know, our goal is to have families, we have a three-bedroom specifically set up for kids and adults, and, you know, we hope for the consideration covering, you know, with all due respect to the ladies and gentlemen spoken, I think we've, we've covered all the bases. We have all the neighbors in agreement. We've talked to them individually, offered them to come into the house to see around, to make sure everything's clean, up to spec, and once again, my wife and I have, have really put a lot of heart and soul into this to maintain the exterior, a 1945 cottage, and make the interior very nice as well. So we hope for your consideration for approval, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
We only have one speaker. Barbara Messner, one additional speaker, Barbara Messner. Ms. Messner?
I'm waiting. He's, he cleans in between. Thank you so much. These are investments. I think he said it's a 1940 cottage. Like I said, I totally agree with Ms. Henley, and Mr. Tower, you act as an attorney. We have an attorney right here, Mark Stiles. I wish the questions would go to him. And I consider the fact that you've worked for Kaufman &amp; Knoll's, who we hire for outside legal work, to be a conflict, and you're for all of these projects. You know, just because somebody might be nice, the bottom line is, who are they renting to? We either have a pandemic or we don't, and we shouldn't just be renting these properties to strangers. And I agree with Ms. Henley, when is somebody going to have, you know, make a motion that we stop having this? You know, I can't even remember how many I've spoken on, plus the due process. I know someone in Croatan who did not get a notice about a short-term rental, and there are people moving out of Croatan, as nice as it is. So it isn't due process, and I disagree. Mr. Tahan is your appointee. You just voted for him to have compensation. He is not prepared. He has yet to say how many rentals there are in every neighborhood, and I oppose these. Yeah, it would be great for everybody to buy a property and rent it out, but you're taking away rentals, full-term, year-round rentals from other people. And I, I oppose it, and we need to have more people step up to the plate, because you're putting an unreasonable burden. I don't know why you keep that up. You have an unreasonable burden on Air Police, on Air 311. It's ridiculous. It's, it's nothing personal, but, you know, you don't know who you're renting to, and you shouldn't have to be calling 311, shouldn't be somebody, you know, 30 minutes away, and then if it's an issue. You know, I appreciate Mr. Wood's, you know, comments on, on some of these, and Mr. Jones, but we need more people to protect our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. An appointed clarification, Mr. Tahan is not a council appointee. He, he is under the direction of the city manager. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Simmons, would you like to rebut? Do you have any additional comments, sir? Come to the podium if so.
Mr. Simmons, would you come forward again, please?
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Simmons, I went out to your property. The, the parking in the front of your property, is that the public right-of-way, or is that...
It is public right-of-way, that is correct.
It is public right-of-way?
Yes. There, there's actually a, a storm run that runs along the front that has to be kept clear, so we, we've been keeping that clear. But then there is some, yeah, and then there is some grass in front that has public parking on, correct?
And you say you live here locally?
Sure. We live right across Shore Drive in Ocean Park.
Where, where do you live? What's your address?
3781 Jefferson Boulevard.
Jefferson Boulevard?
Correct.
Yeah. So you're close to the property, there's a problem, you can get there?
Yes, sir. We, we are within four-minute drive and five minutes with the new light that's on Shore Drive, and I can run there in 10 minutes.
Is that your permanent residence?
That is our permanent residence, correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
No additional speakers.
Okay.
Thank you.
So do you have a motion, Mr. Jones?
Well, I, I tend to agree with Ms. Henley that we shouldn't be doing any of these applications until we have better control of the property, of, of what's going on with the properties. But I did go out there, and I looked at this property and this, and this gentleman, or this couple, have met all of the qualifications, and frankly, it's in an area that if I, if we were to create, create the overlay districts that I proposed previously, and Mr. Wood has spoken of recently in the council meetings, that it would be within one of those districts. And so, because of the fact that Mr. and Ms. Simmons live basically just across Shore Drive from this property, are able to monitor it and maintain it well, and, and be responsive in, if there's a complaint and so forth, and because of the fact that there were no neighbors who have objected to the application, I feel compelled to make an op, make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second discussion, Ms. Wilson.
I just wanted to say, I think it's good, too, that they waited until they get their approval before they started renting, and they followed the rules. That's really important.
Yeah, Ms. Abbott.
I'd also just like to add additionally, the property is next door to a commercial use, so it's not exactly in the middle of a neighborhood either. It's right off Shore Drive, next to a restaurant that I'm pretty sure has live music, so I think this is probably a more than appropriate fit for that area, so.
It is next to a commercial use. You're right.
Okay, so, motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, we are open.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Luci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
No, in all deference to my good friend and neighbor, Mr. Jones, I'm still voting nay.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Via a vote of nine to two, you've approved the application of Kathleen Page Simmons and Grant Simmons.
Okay, and our final planning item is number five, and it's Creekside Getaway LLC, Daisy Jade, conditional use permit, short-term rental, 3214 Creekside Drive, District Three, Rose Hall.
The applicant, Daisy Jade, is participating via WebEx. Ms. Jade, if you will pause for three seconds before beginning your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about my property on Creekside Drive, and for the opportunity for a conditional use permit. I also have gone through the process of all of the steps that were required, including the survey, including the appropriate driving, I mean, I apologize, parking spots. I also have hired a property manager who is also my cleaner, and she lives a half a mile away, so she's able to come by if there's any issues. She also takes the garbage down if, for some reason, the guest has forgotten, because she lives very close to the property. My property is on a cul-de-sac, and I have reached out to my neighbors. I do believe some of them, at least one that I spoke to, said that he, you know, definitely put in a letter for me. I do have the neighbors of my, or, I mean, the support of my neighbors, and, you know, they do have house rules, you know, no parties are allowed, that sort of thing. I also do pay the city taxes that are required. So I have been trying to do everything that is required in order to continue to run my short-term rental, and I really appreciate the time speaking before you all today.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner.
I find it kind of strange, bringing up the due process again, that some of these people, you're supposed to, the rules are pretty clear, because I get the, the emails, that you have to sign up by 5:30. So to have people show up when they know there's opposition and not be registered to speak and get to speak, I don't think that's fair. You know, I take the time to come here. I don't want to be here. I'd much rather go to the beach or do something else, but I care about my city, I care about public safety, I care about due process. We have too many of these, and this, they, this goes back to 2000. I think it was Don Weeks that built the first event house in Sandbridge in 2000. There were problems then, there were lawsuits then, and the Sandbridge people, you know, they've been working with Ms. Henley. Could you not tap while I'm trying to speak? It's distracting. Thank you.
Pardon?
No, I, I'm talking to Mr. Rouse. I appreciate him turning around, because it's usually, everyone's back, and I asked that y'all be all at the podium with masks, like these people, so there's a little bit more room, and we can... people, so there's a little bit more room, and we can be at the other podium. But it's just, I know, it's distracting. It's distracting when somebody's, you know, tapping their hands and, and being rude. Okay?
Please continue.
I'm trying. Like I said, it's distracting. I don't appreciate it. And, yeah, we have, we have too many of these. They're investment properties. This one is Mr. Wood's area.
No, it is not.
It's not?
No.
It's not Lynn Haven?
No.
This isn't, okay, which one is this?
Mr. Berluci, please continue, Ms.
Okay, I thought this was Massaro. Either way, there's, there's, there's too many of these, and all you care about is revenue and taxes, and we don't have enough police. I can see you smiling at your mask, Mr. Tower, Mr. Rouse. You know, y'all, y'all are obnoxious. You know, it's, it's the same thing, Ms. Henley, Mr. Jones, sometimes has common sense, but the rest of you all vote for revenue.
Ms. Messner, with due respect, as, when we do the reading
Right.
on the thing, we ask for civility and mutual respect.
Right.
That's how things get accomplished.
Right. And it is disrespectful to be distracting and tapping your fingers when somebody's speaking.
And it's disrespectful, respectful with ad hominem attacks on members of this body. Thank you.
It's my free speech. Thank you.
Ms. Jade, would you like to make any rebuttal comments? If so, you can be, just, please, please pause for three seconds before you begin rebuttal. Thank you.
I just wanted to address, I'm not sure if she was speaking directly about, you know, speaking via WebEx, but I know that this was an option because of the pandemic. And I did register prior. You know, I immediately emailed and gave my contact information that Amanda had requested, Ms. Barnes had requested. So, I'm not quite sure. I definitely didn't mean any disrespect by showing up via WebEx. I just know that with safety, it was presented, and I felt like it was the safest option. But otherwise.
No more speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Berluci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just also want to take a moment to thank Ms. Jade for participating and for her presentation, and participation by WebEx. So, I do believe that we're at a crossroads as it relates to short-term rentals, and that we must take action soon. I remain concerned about the impact short-term rentals will have on Virginia Beach neighborhoods, and about the compatibility of short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods, particularly in the Rose Hall District. We have to protect the character of our neighborhoods, the fabric of residential life in Virginia Beach, and the residents who live there. But our failure to take action shouldn't negatively impact applicants who have participated in the process as we ask them to do. And this applicant has done everything our ordinance requires and everything we asked them to do. And I'm not comfortable making a motion to deny the application when they've acted in good faith and adhered to our process. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve this application, but we need a better way to protect Virginia Beach neighborhoods and give residents the peace of mind to know that they don't live next door to a hotel. So, I want to urge this body to move forward quickly to improve neighborhood protections in our short-term rental ordinances. And I, I do believe that there's a process in place that's, that's beginning to do that. I hope we can expedite that process and move forward, because frankly, for myself, I'm, I'm running out of patience with, with myself for expressing this, this sentiment. So, it's up to us to take action. But for this purpose, I will make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have motion and a second. Mr. Wood?
Thanks. And I appreciate what Mr. Berluci says. And when, when we thought this was on consent, I indicated I was going to vote against it. I, I still intend to. This is, you know, when I take a look at these, I think there are specific areas where short-term rentals fit, where, where people tend to want to go. And then also, you take a look at, you know, the, the ability to, to use the property if you aren't living in it. In this case, this is a, is a townhouse neighborhood. It's, it's far away from the attractions, beach, anything that people would, would, would want to visit. And I just don't think it's, it's appropriate for this, this neighborhood. I, I think also, there's no disadvantage to the, to the property owner if they don't choose to live in it. It's, it's a, it's a good long-term rental market. So, I, I think that, I just can't support it, with all due respect to Mr. Berluci.
Okay. Any other comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Oh, could we call?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if the applicant's still on the phone, but Bobby, you might be able to answer the question. Do we know if the applicant is local? I know she said she had somebody who could respond quickly. But I kind of agree with Jim in that this is a townhouse, and I, I do think they're kind of close together.
Based on their application, the applicant is not local. They do have a local representative, as noted.
Correct.
They, they did represent that they do have someone that cleans and takes care of them.
And the neighbors are not in opposition?
We've received, at least at the time when we double-checked it, we've received no letters of opposition.
But I, but I think it's, it's a, it's a heavy rental community.
Do we, I was just about to say, do we know, do we know if the, well, I guess the land, the owners of the property are notified, not necessarily the occupants?
That is correct. However, we do still post signs on the property to notify people of an application.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, if we can do the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Nay.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
No.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of six to five, you have approved the application of Creekside Getaway. One, two, three, four, five, yes, six to five.
Okay, at this point, could we do the appointments, please?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I nominate the following individuals: to the 2040 Vision Action Community Coalition, David Weiner; to the Arts and Humanities Commission, Michael Cloud Butler; Raissa Islam; Olga Torres Baker; to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Kevin Newton, who moves from an alternate to a full member; to the Community Organization Grant Review and Allocation Committee, Lori Zantini; to the Historic Preservation Commission, Hannah Levi, representing a student, and Tim Oakesman as a full member. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ready for the vote?
Yes.
Ready?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have pointed those names by Vice Mayor Wood.
Great. Terms of unfinished business, as the council, yes?
I just wanted to, for the council as a whole, to recognize the gentleman who came up and disinfected the podium every time someone spoke and has been here all night. I mean, I just, that's not something we normally ask our people who keep our building, but I just want to recognize him for the great job and for being.
Hey, and thank you very much, yeah. Keep things going. Thank you very much, and we appreciate you being such a valuable member of our city team. Thank you. Just unfinished business, we have, all the council members have a survey that, if you can give it to me, and we will definitely, I thought we had some very, very good discussions today that led to some positive things. Is there any new business? Okay, we are adjourned, and we will be going into open mic.